Bristol, Tennessee City Council Meeting of June 19th, 2025 to order. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Fire Robin?
Here.
Hutton?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
All right. Want to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for attending this meeting. There are a number of opportunities throughout the evening for members of the community to speak on city business. There was a sheet in the hallway that you could fill out as you came in the room. But if you weren't able to fill that sheet out, I'll give you another opportunity to speak when it's at that point. As we move forward throughout tonight's agenda, I'll note each time when public is invited to comment, and their comment is welcome. We'll do that throughout this night. But there's, just so you know, when we go through those times, there's one point, we have appearance of citizens. And so if you filled out, you signed up on this sheet, you'll come up for that. There's other times when we're talking about specific things on the agenda that we'll ask for public comment. When we ask for public comment during those times, we're asking for comment on that specific ordinance or resolution. The public, the appearance of citizens, you can talk to us about anything at all. But in both cases, you have three minutes, and our city manager will keep the time. We'll let you know, because there's a lot of folks who want to speak. So we'll move through that. We have three public hearings tonight's agenda. The first is ordinance 25-13. It's an ordinance to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. This public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 25-13. Finance Director Holly Varen will now present.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. An item for public hearing denied is ordinance 25-13 to appropriate the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Is that good?
Fiscal year 2026 budget totals.
Holly, can you be sure to really talk into, yeah?
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, fiscal year 2026 budget totals $155,339,488, reflecting a 4.1% increase, or 6 million 177,113 dollars from the fiscal '25 budget. This continues all programs and services as in the past while making strategic capital improvements to meet the future needs of the community. It includes police and fire wage increases based on the department analyses, a 4.7% pay increase for all other city departments, and funds for the remaining department analysis implementation. The municipal government portion totals $95,904,212, reflecting an increase of $4,799,990, or 5.2% from the fiscal '25 budget. And the school system portion totals $59,435,276, reflecting an increase of $1,467,123, or 2.5% from the fiscal year '25 budget. On the next slide, that's just a visual presentation of the 2026 budget. Please note the total municipal functions increased by 4.7 million at the 5.2%. And on the next slide, included in the budget is funding for the Bristol Public Library at $1,153,425, which is broken down on this slide. And that equates to approximately 10 cents of the tax rate, or 10%. On the next slide, the budget also includes funding for Bristol City Schools at $5,568,458, and it's comprised of the various amounts on that slide, which includes the operating transfer at $4,765,429. The total funding on this slide represents 49 cents of the tax rate, or roughly 26% of it. The next slide is addressing some of the concerns and questions that were raised since the first reading of the ordinance. And this shows, an item to note in the city manager budget, there were funds to implement the salary increases resulting from the remaining department analyses and are included in the city manager's operating budget, here highlighted in yellow. And then there's also some questions on the next slide that addresses some projects that have been received. Those have a minimal impact on the property tax rate. The proposed baseball stadium is a public-private partnership using bond proceeds to leverage private contributions. The debt payment will equate to approximately 2.75 cents of the tax rate. A change from the first reading is the removal of funding for the improvements to the Melrose property. And then the Elsie King property is being purchased with bond proceeds, which will be paid for through reallocation of Evoque Library funding and lease savings on office space. Grant funding is being pursued for development of both the Elsie King property and the Shelby Lot. And lastly, the visitor center is being constructed by Explore Bristol. Explore Bristol is not funded with property taxes. This organization receives funding from the occupancy tax proceeds, which must be used for tourism and marketing. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Let me remind you again, it's on this particular topic. Please come to the podium, state your name before making your comments. Please give your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Blair Henley, 305 Three Oaks Drive. And this is what I was going to talk about that I signed up for, so I don't need to come back up here. First, I want to thank the city manager, because I've aggravated her pretty good for the last several days trying to understand the budget. And I attended the work session, and really, my first question is, you're going to pass this tax hike, is the budget balanced? Like, is, you know, and I know, like, the school system is not $59 million of this budget. It's the 4.65. So I'm just curious, is the budget balanced? And I believe at the work session, it was said that it's not balanced by a million this year and could be 3 to 6 million next year at the current tax rate proposal, the hike. And so I'm just curious, how is that going to be funded next year? When I believe you also stated you wanted the tax, if you passed this tax hike, you wanted it in place for two years. So I'm just, I want to understand, is the budget balanced? And if it's not, what's going to be the plan next year if you're not planning another tax hike or something? So, and again, I have sent several emails to the city manager, and she's responded within 24 hours. So I'm really just, I just want to understand. I don't understand passing a budget that's not balanced. I've never understood that. And I've been responsible for budgets before, and I've just never, I've never heard of that before. So that's what I wanted to say. And, you know, really, the big confusing part for me was when you say the school system budget, like when you said, I think, $155 million. Well, most of that's coming from other sources, like the state taxes. And the city is contributing, I think it's 4.6 something million, and then maybe a capital expenditure or something. It's like 5.1 or something like that. So I really just want to know, are we going to balance the budget? And what's the plan? That, you know, if it's not going to be balanced, and we're going to pay these extra taxes, you know, what's the plan for next year?
Well, we are required to have a balanced budget. I think there may be some confusion about what you actually mean by balanced budget. I mean, we are required to make sure that we can cover that. I think when we, when you came to the work session, what we were working through was the models based on what it will look like over the next few years at this particular tax rate, and how much we would have to sort of lean into our reserve funding in order to make sure that we've covered everything, so.
Yeah, and I did, she explained that to me, that if you look at that one line, the difference in the fund, the reserve fund, it's in parentheses, so it's a negative. So it's not balanced. I'm well aware you can take it right out of the reserve fund, but then you're depleting that. And if you have 3 to 6 million next year, are we just going to keep taking it from the reserve fund?
Well, that's the thing that we've been trying to work out while recognizing that we've got to keep the tax rate at a place where we're consistently providing the services that our people need, as well as making sure that we don't tax ourselves out of business. But, yeah, I mean, this is just the process that we have to go through to do this out. That's the reason the reserve funds are in there, to help us carry that.
And you don't, do you have to maintain a certain level of the reserve funds?
Yeah, we have to maintain at least a three months' reserve in there. And so that's what we were looking at over the next few years. If we have to lean into our reserve so much in the projection, how far out can we do that? So that's why, if you go back to that worksheet that we had out there, that model, we're looking at what we'll need to do over the next few years, so.
And I think that if that was somehow explained in the budget sheet, you know, because all I see is, it's not balanced. I know that you can pull the funds, but I think that, at least for my confusion, if you just had it line items, like, you know, if it's a million dollars in the city manager's budget, okay, that's fine. What is it for specifically? Like, we're going to use $400,000 for X, $300,000? I think that would stop a lot of the confusion.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Please state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Eric Spicer, 433 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. Good to see you, Mayor Hutton. I'm sure you're glad I lost. I know I am. Ms. Powers, good to see you. Ms. Fire Robin, good to see you. Ms. Bourgeois, thank you for the privilege of your time a few weeks ago. It was very brief, as this may be as well, sadly. The visitor center, I have a question about. What started the visitor center, and how is it funded?
I'm going to let the city manager speak to that.
Thank you. The visitor center is through Explore Bristol. That's our destination, Explore Bristol.
Explore Bristol.
That's our destination marketing organization. Occupancy taxes are used to fund that. And those are regulated by the state, so occupancy tax can only be used for tourism and marketing. We can't use them for anything else. So there are no property taxes going into that, and only occupancy tax that can only be used for those restricted purposes.
So you have a fund that's from other businesses, the taxes from those businesses, that's paying for that building at the moment? Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's a separate entity, that is, both the City of Bristol, Tennessee, the City of Bristol, Virginia. Sullivan County is now participating in that. So that is a separate organization, but it is funded in large part by the city.
So it's not out of our fund, totally correct?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. What was the purpose of this building and not maybe acquiring a historic home to restore?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
What was the purpose of having this train station to nowhere? I know it's a visitor's center, but we used to have, or at least the Historic Society had at one time, the King House that's right behind the courthouse. And they gave it up to an individual. Why not try to purchase one of these grand Victorians and have those repaired as the visitor's center?
I can answer this.
Okay.
The King House was no longer available. It had been purchased by a private entity. And in doing the study for the construction of the visitor's center, we were advised that it needed to be somewhere highly visible. It needed to have certain square footage. It will have a lot of digital amenities. It needed a certain amount of parking. And the land was actually donated. And so it seemed like a good fit to be right there on the corner of Anderson Avenue.
Well, the King House was, had probably just as much square footage if it had been restored correctly with the lanes coating.
Well, it was already, it had already been purchased by a private entity. It was not available.
Right. I guess the Historic Society sold it to the individual. Well, that's very sad. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak, ask questions on this ordinance, in particular ordinance 25-13? All right. Please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Timothy Marandino, 404 El Paso Drive. I wanted to speak about this 25-13 primarily on the numbers. I don't have all the access that you do, but based off of what I'm seeing, when we got our assessments and the state set the new rate, the state set the new rate not to equalize, but actually still to increase taxes based off of our 2.25 per 100 that we had originally, that you all approved back in September. By my estimates, it was a 22% increase from the assessments alone. Was that calculated into this new budget to reflect that the state's new rate that they placed for Bristol City was actually still an increase from the 2.25 by about 20%?
Ms. Bourgeois, you want to?
That's not true. That will be addressed with the next public hearing with the certified rate.
Right.
But that's not accurate.
Right. So we will deal with the certified tax rate on the next ordinance?
My apologies.
That's okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and your address.
Carol McCall, 216 Bluff City Highway.
Can you pull the microphone? Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Carol McCall, 216 Bluff City Highway. I go by Denise. My question is, and I'm sure that you guys have spent hours going through the budget, are there things in the budget that aren't necessary? Like, two electric vehicles, a robot weed sprayer. And I know those two items are only like $145,000, which in retrospect to $155 million, doesn't seem like a lot. But it's something to detract from that $155 million.
We have gone through the budget even over the last few days and tried our best to cut out anything that we possibly could in order to even lower the tax rate. So, yes, I mean, we've looked at all of those things. There are certain things that are being, and I can't speak specifically to those two items that you just mentioned, but Ms. Bourgeois, again.
I can, thank you. Those two specific items, the electric vehicles, it's about a $20,000 impact locally. The rest is grant funded. They are to replace inspector vehicles because they put on a certain amount of mileage per day. So the cost savings in gas and replacement of the older vehicles that need to be replaced anyways, it was a cost savings to get the electric vehicles.
But is it still a cost savings when things start to tear up on the electric vehicle? Because batteries are super expensive and...
We had our director of general services, who's been overseeing our mechanic, our garage for 30-plus years, involved in that analysis of the vehicles to ensure that that actually was cost-effective to do. And then additionally, the robotic sprayer takes the place of staff time, so the, I can't.
But does it take the place of an employee?
It takes the place of hours of an employee that then ultimately can either reduce an employee number or reallocate those hours to another project or work that needs to be done.
Okay. And I didn't go completely through the budget. It's 78 pages. But is there any allocation for trash services? Poor Laura has to hear from me every week. Because this past week, our bulk stuff wasn't picked up on Friday. It was picked up this Tuesday because they have two trucks down. You know, and I asked her, I said, you know, does this have anything? Do you have an overabundance of, you know, the forms coming in for pickup? And she said, no, it's because our trucks are down. So has something been budgeted to them? Because I'm for things like that. I'm for raises. We live across the street from the central fire station. We watch how hard those guys work. We're all for raises. What we're not for is things that may not be necessary. And I know the City of Bristol needs to grow. But in the end, we're still just a community of, I'm going to say, less than 29,000 people. You know, we're not Knoxville, we're not Nashville, we're not, you know. So I think somewhere, somebody needs to maybe get out in the community. We brought a lady that walks a lot with us today. She's 70. She's on a fixed income. This scares her to death. You know, all of these increases in this budget, you know, she may not necessarily understand that. But somewhere, I think somebody's gotten out of touch with the actual people who live in the town of Bristol. So.
All right, this public hearing is now closed. A public hearing on the intent of city council to exceed the certified property tax rate of a dollar of 1.5397 by establishing a rate of $1.92. This public hearing is opened for this item. City Attorney Danielle Smith will present on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Tonight, I'd like to provide some background on the certified tax rate and the legal requirements involved if we're going to exceed the certified tax rate. State law requires that the county property tax assessor reappraise all property in the county on a regular basis. 2025 is a reappraisal year for Sullivan County, including properties located in the city of Bristol. The value of all the taxable property in Bristol in 2024 was about $744 million. The exact number is on the PowerPoint up at your left. After the 2025 reappraisal, the value of all taxable property in Bristol rose to about $1.18 billion. So it went from $744 million to $1.18 billion. The overall value of property in Bristol rose by 51%. During a reappraisal year, state law requires the property assessors and the State Board of Equalization to provide local governments with a certified tax rate. To arrive at the certified tax rate, these agencies compared property values in the city in 2024 to property values in the city after reappraisal in 2025. The certified tax rate is the tax rate at which Bristol's revenue from the property taxes after reappraisal will equal Bristol's revenue from the property taxes prior to the reappraisal. Just as an aside to anticipate the question that Mr. Marandino asked, this is an incredibly complicated calculation because assessments are done at about six different rates. And so you cannot just take $1.18 billion, multiply it by 25, and multiply it by the tax rate to come up with the tax that's going to be produced. The calculations are much more complicated than that. The goal of the certified tax rate law is to identify a tax rate that is revenue neutral for the city. Adopting that certified tax rate does not mean that an individual property taxpayer will pay the same bill as last year. The certified tax rate is only intended to represent the tax rate at which the city's revenue from property taxes remains the same from year to year. When property values increase because of reappraisal, the certified tax rate will be lower than the previous year's tax rate. When property values decrease, the certified tax rate will be higher. In 2024, with property valued at $7.44 billion, it took a tax rate of $2.25 to generate $18.4 million in property tax revenue for the city. After the 2025 reappraisal, with property now valued at $1.18 billion, a tax rate of $1.5397 will generate the same $18.4 million in revenue. The city's 2026 budget that we just had a public hearing on and which you will be considering later on in the agenda, includes a tax rate of $1.92. This is higher than the certified tax rate, obviously. Cities are permitted to set a tax rate that is above the certified tax rate. Under TCA Section 67-5-1702, the city must publish notice of its intent to exceed the certified tax rate and hold a public hearing before adopting the higher tax rate. Notice of the city's intent to exceed the certified tax rate was published on June 9, 2025 in the Kingsport Times News and on the city's website. Holding this public hearing is the second step in complying with the certified tax rate law. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Please state your name and your address.
Yes, sir.
Remember, we're dealing with the tax rate. That's what we're dealing with in this section. Just making sure.
Correct, correct. Eric Spicer, 433 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. So we're talking about the tax rate. You reduced the tax rate from last year, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
You reduced the tax rate to 1.54, is that right, from last year's?
Well, the certified tax rate has dropped from $1.98 to $1.53, yeah. But that's through the state, yes.
All right. But this also affects... But this does, this also affects the assessment that we're being, that the state is mandating Sullivan County do as well as the city. I know it's state law that you have to go with whatever the Sullivan County comes up with.
This came, this came because of the, the assessment done by the county.
Correct. What was the reason for the assessment?
They, they, they're required by, by law to do those.
Well, it's an extent, an extremely aggressive assessed increase, more than has ever been.
Right.
Well, I can tell you exactly what the reason's for. It's the domestic migration that we've seen in Tennessee and Southwest Virginia, North Carolina, Texas. They've all seen a lot of people from California, New York, Florida, all migrate in, and that's great. And why are they coming here? Well, they're coming here because we have less taxes, it's less crowded, we have less crime, although that's not being helped out much by the casino and the things that brought, was brought in with that. But if, if any increase is warranted, it's not to the degree that they actually assessed. I spoke with the county assessment board about this several weeks ago, or about a week ago, and they explained to me that, they, they asked me what the tax rate was, and I said, well, I don't have an idea. And they said, 3%. We've reduced it to 1.16 or whatever the number is. So, so I said, if you assess to these rates, which is for some people double, if not triple in some, in some cases, it would be a zero-sum gain, gain for the city. Like you said, it's going to come out to be just about the same. Well, that's kind of a bait and switch type of mentality that's, that's happening. So what's going to happen is, can you guarantee, can you guarantee that that tax rate will not go up a year, two years from now based upon the assessments? You can't. It's a rhetorical question, and I know you, I know you understand that. So what's going to happen is, whatever people are paying today, and we have to pay city and county taxes living in Tennessee, living in Bristol, Tennessee City. So if you're paying $500 for county tax this year and $500 for city tax, that's $1,000. Well, this assessment, your property's just doubled and sometimes even tripled with some, in some cases. Then when that tax rate does go back up, that $1,000 you're paying this year is going to double to $2,000.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay. Well, all right. I'll be back. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Does anyone else want to speak to this matter? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Sally Long. I live at 111 Richmond Heights Road in Bristol, Tennessee. Margaret, I know you, you're a, you're a neighbor. I'm a Walker. Vince, I know you. I voted for both of you, and I am against any tax rate increase. I'm on a fixed income. I know my fixed income, based on the federal, federal government formula, is going up 2.5%. That's my raise, and that should be yours. I'm sorry, I'm not against the employees. I just feel like you have put us up against the employees, saying, we need to increase the taxes this much to give the employees raises. Service has gone down. Things are being built that we don't want to see, like a visitor center, whether it comes from our taxes or not. We moved here because we like Bristol, Tennessee. We're not in Los Angeles. We don't want to be in Los Angeles. You all are taxing us to death. The county just taxed us to death, and I swear, I vote. I saw your mother, Vince, at, at the election office, and I talked to her, a lovely woman, and just, you know, she was so nice, and I, she said, vote for my son, and I said, that New Yorker? But you're a great guy. But I swear, if you all vote for this tax increase, I will vote against you. My husband will vote against you. My mother, who's not here, will vote against you. My daughter will vote against you because everything else is going up. We don't need, the county taxes just went up, and we do not need our city rate to go up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Please state your name and your address on the certified property tax rate. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jesse Campbell. I reside at 226 Galway Road. My wife and I live in Bristol. We raise our children here. We pay taxes here, just like everyone else in this room here tonight, and just like most of them, we've had enough. We've been told this proposed tax rate increase is just math. It's what's needed in order for the city to do business, but it's not just numbers. No, to me, that dog just won't hunt. It's a choice being made by each and every member of the city council here tonight. And once again, the choice is to squeeze the hardworking people of Bristol, the very same people who put their faith in each and every one of you on this council to represent their interests. This city and many others in our area, it's not a problem that's unique to Bristol, in my opinion, has gotten real comfortable with funding economic development and growth through projects like TIF deals, pilot programs, opportunity zones, things of that nature that defer tax collections, often in the tens of millions of dollars every year. It's almost as if a new business rolls into town and roll, roll out the red carpet and we open up the checkbook. Well, now the chickens have come home to roost, and it's time to pay for our schools, pay for our roads, pay for our services that we all enjoy and rely on as residents. Only problem is, there's a fox in the hen house. Suddenly, the burden shifts to the little guy, the single parents, the homeowners, the family businesses, the widow on a fixed income, and to me, that just ain't right. You know, we've built an economy on handouts and hope nobody would notice. We've been chasing growth like it's a magic trick when what we really need is stewardship and leadership that knows how to build something that lasts, not just something that looks good on a press release. And, you know, maybe that's the story of Bristol right now. I thought about it tonight as we drove in here, and we drove underneath that sign on State Street that says, Bristol, a good place to live. Have you ever really thought about that sign? What it says? A good place to live. Not great, not exceptional, just good. It's like the folks who built it knew we had settled for good. Frankly, I'm tired of settling. I want this city to be great. I want us to expect more, demand better, and stop asking everyday people to carry the burden while developers and large corporations cash in and move out. That's why I'm here tonight, not to complain and moan, but to say plainly, enough is enough. It's time for bold, it's time for smart, time for leadership and stewardship. Time for this council to show that they truly care about the people who actually live here, not just the ones who profit here. This proposed tax rate increase isn't good policy. It's passing the hat and putting a disproportionate burden on those who can least afford to shoulder it. So I implore the council tonight, stop settling, stop passing the buck, and start building a local economy in a city that we're all proud to call home. Thank you.
State your name and your address.
Tim Marandino, 404 Paso Drive. Thank you for the explanation earlier, City Attorney Smith, for the changes in the assessments. I came here tonight because the tax rate, at what it is already, is an increase because the 2.25 that you all raised it to last year. With the new assessments, me personally, it's another increase, regardless of how the new certified rate was preset by the state. It's still an increase for me by 38% in just two years. With this new increase, 1.98, 92, we're looking at, again, another increase for me by 78%. My taxes two years ago were around $1,300 for property tax. I have a small home, family. We have three kids, my wife. I'm in, I'm in reserves in order to help support our country, and with this new tax increase, I don't even think I can afford my new house payment because of the escrows. If this new increase, it'll go from 1,300 to 1,900, almost $2,000, and that's not including the extra reserve that the escrow is required to save too. So my monthly housing payment's going to go up by almost $200 potentially, just because of this increase. So I think you really need to ensure whenever you're making these increases, you're not just doing service by the city as a whole, you're doing service by every single citizen here to ensure everybody who lived here can stay here after these increases.
Thank you.
Denise McCall, 216 Bluff City Highway. First question is, as you guys published this on your website and in the Kingsport Times News, was there a reason why it was not put in the Bristol Herald-Courier?
Yes.
I mean, because nobody in Kingsport lives in Bristol.
The state requires us to publish in the newspaper a general circulation in the county. The Bristol Herald-Courier no longer publishes on a daily basis. The Kingsport Times News does. It meets the statutory requirement, and it's a lot cheaper.
Okay.
So we saved a fair amount of money.
Back, back to my other thing about being out of touch. A lot of older people don't utilize the internet. You know, so they, if they don't live in Kingsport and they don't get a newspaper and they don't utilize the internet, they don't see your website. So all of those people are uninformed. Next question is, thank you for answering about the newspaper. We're, we're in the same, but we've lived here for 20 years. We raised our daughter here. We love it here. You know, we want to stay here, but our appraisal doubled. We're going to be looking at paying roughly $4,000 in taxes between county and city. That could very well be enough to push us out, and we don't want to do that. This is, we've lived in this house the longest. This house is our home. This town is our home. We just want you guys to think about that because on your organizational chart, the first people listed on that chart are the citizens of Bristol. And like everybody that's been up here before, you guys are pushing us out, and for what? You know, and I, I don't approve of my tax assessment. On Bluff City Highway where I live, I don't know if you guys get out and drive around, but there's a trailer park that's in between McCray Street and Cox Street that's full of dilapidated, unlivable mobile homes, and I'm not opposed to mobile homes. I grew up in a mobile home. We worked hard to live where we live now, and we want to be able to stay there. But also, if my assessment is going to double, let's get out and clean some of these places up. Because if I put my house on the market tomorrow and people come to look at it and they find out that the trailer park on the next street over is full of fentanyl, full of drug dealers, who do you think is going to buy my house? And then when they see the tax, the taxes on it, who's going to buy my house? So then I'm stuck, and I know, my time is up.
Thank you.
And I really hope you guys make good decisions because your time could be up too, just like the other.
Mr. Spicer, Mr. Spicer, you've already spoken on this particular item on the agenda. Would you mind letting someone else do that? Thank you.
Donna Trigiani, 200 Mute Street Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. City forecasting is usually completed one year in advance. The city manager and council would have known that raises for service workers were needed a year ago. They would have known that more money was needed for chemicals to treat water and pay for increased salt, as reported on yesterday's news release on WCYP. Where was this concern when you bid it on a luxury item, the LLC King Building, for 2.75 million? If you're so concerned, you should rescind your agreement to purchase the building so that we can increase service workers' pay and pay for the salt and chemicals. Another suggestion is to sell the other luxury item, which is a $1.4 million Melrose property to satisfy concerns for increased wages and purchasing salt and chemicals. Our current property taxes are already higher than every city from Nashville to here, including Nashville. For a $200,000 home in Bristol, Tennessee, with your proposed rate, along with the county tax, the property taxes would be $2,160. For Nashville City, in the city, their tax rates are currently $1,627. We're a small city. We don't make large wages like Nashville does. You know, even Knoxville, Knoxville with their taxes are $1,854.80 per year. This is an unreasonable burden on the people of Bristol, Tennessee, that we do not have lower taxes like the other larger cities do. We are the smallest city of the tri-cities, and even Johnson City and Kingsport aren't paying as much as we are. The Bristol's age distribution, according to the 2018 to 2022 ACS five-year estimates, almost 20% or 65 and over. And how are they supposed to pay for these kind of taxes? Almost 20, 20% can't even satisfy their basic needs if they have to pay these property taxes. Bristol, Tennessee is a low-income city and has higher taxes than everyone. It will be very difficult to save for retirement when much of everyone's income is going to pay property taxes so that you can raise incomes for the service workers by salt and chemicals. This would be a Robin Hood type of scenario by robbing Peter to pay Paul. Thank you.
Again, let, let me remind you all that what we're asking for is if you have comments based on the certified property tax rate, there's a time in the, in our agenda for people to make just the other comments. So we're going to be here forever, which is fine. I've just, we're, as we go through the agenda, if you've got comments based on this particular ordinance and resolutions dealing specifically with the certified property tax rate, that this is the time to actually talk about that. I hear you. Thank you. But it, we'd like to, we'd like to move forward in the agenda so that we can, so if you have comments about the certified property tax rate, that'd be great.
Mayor, and I'm Rick James. I live at 209 Apple Ridge Drive, Bluff City, Tennessee.
Thank you.
And this directly does go to the certified tax rate. It was my understanding from the numbers that I was told tonight that if we have a tax rate of $1.54, that would equal the amount of tax that we had revenue from last year. Is that correct? And we're talking about going up to $1.92. My math, real quick, says that's a 33% increase from last year to this year in the revenue that will be generated. Is that correct?
It's not.
Okay. Explain that to me. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because I, I know that my tax rate is about $1,300 a year, and I'm kind of worried with the fact, I know the assessment goes in, I know that the tax rate went down. If the assessment is, it was $1.50 or $1.54, and it would have been the same as last year, and it goes up to $1.92, that's a 33% raise in that rate. Explain that to me.
Go ahead.
The tax rate last year, sorry, the tax rate last year was $2.25.
Correct. But you said that, that at 1.54, it will generate the same amount of revenue for the city that it was at 2.25 last year, correct?
Right. On a citywide basis.
Correct. So what I'm saying is, if you raise that tax rate from $1.54 to $1.92, that's 38 cents more than what it was on average for a typical Bristol taxpayer.
Last year's certified tax rate was $1.98, right? So if you, if you leave the tax rate at $1.98, it's a, it's a net zero, like there's, we don't, we don't generate income. I, I understand. That, that's what it was last year, and then we raised it to 2.25 because we, we needed to generate...
And what was the revenue that was generated?
From, from last year?
$18.4 million.
Okay. So what is the projected revenue if we have the 1.92 cent tax? Okay, so what is the projected revenue if we have the 1.92 cent tax?
Ms. Varan can look that up for you. She spoke about that in the first public.
Well, I understand that. But what she told us was what it would be if it was 1.34, which would, or 1.54, I'm sorry, which would be the same, which would be 18 million. So we're talking about a 33% change in revenue. I'm all for, I'm a public servant, okay? I'm an educator. And I think that teachers and I think the law enforcement and the fire department and, and all the people should get a pay raise. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that my math is different than what you guys' math is. And I'm going to defer to you guys because I'm sure you're a lot smarter than I am. But I did teach a little bit of economics and take some finance and stuff. And I'd like that addressed before we decided to pass such a large increase. That's all I was asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, the council members. Good evening, the mayor. My name is Nick Rutledge. I live at 102 Galway Road. I'm a relatively new citizen of Bristol, but lived in Chattanooga and Knoxville previously. So I've been in East Tennessee my entire life. I understand it's very hard to come up with a certified tax rate. I'll try my best to stay on the certified tax rate issue. But my biggest issue is it seems like there were a lot of projects that, or a lot of purchases that were previously made without a project clearly identified prior to purchasing it. And the type of work I do, I cannot launch a project of any type without a clearly identified need prior to launching the project. And just doing some numbers here, Cleveland, Tennessee is at a buck 71. Johnson City is at a buck 41. I don't know if they're going to raise it or not. Kingsport's at a buck 67. And y'all are proposing, I believe, $1.92 or $1.98. I've seen both numbers. So my basic call is to, if there is an issue with the budget that is related to the tax rate, that is fine, but let's settle on the median in between those two numbers of around $1.73 to $1.76. And if there's still an issue in a year, let's come back in a year and talk about it. But as a compromise, my position is let's settle on the median in between those two numbers, work with it for a year, do some more creative requests for proposals for like police and fire equipment. Let's partner with our neighbors like Kingsport and Johnson City and get higher purchasing power for this police and fire equipment. Give the folks that work for the city their raises. I'm not disputing that. And then settle on this median of about $1.73 to $1.76 and come back in a year. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Suzak. I live at 114 Monroe Drive, Bristol, Tennessee, 37620. My wife said, "Don't ramble." And I was going to do the song about rambling, but I won't do that. I appreciate everything you guys do. I know it's a tough job. My question really has to do with my personal taxes on my property, and it's a question for you. Does the city of Bristol use the data from the county to determine how much they're going to tax my property? Not including the tax rate, the 1.92 that you're going to use. But the square footage, the acreage, does that all come from the county?
It does.
So my property that I bought, when I bought it, I used county, they use county data. All the real estate agents and all the places that list what my square footage of my property and what my acreage is, they use county data. County data turns out to be in error, significant error. A month and a half ago, I met with them, pointed this out to them, and they came back. And they're still using the same data. So I almost would say that, some people in here may say that's fraud. I don't. But there's significant errors. So my question is, can I submit to the city a detailed summary of my property and why there's errors from the county? That I could show county data? The data that actually exist? Registered surveys of my property? Easements on my property that reduce the square, usable square footage? Can I do that? Can I submit it to anywhere in the county, in the city? Because the county has ignored it. But yet they said they would not ignore it. So it's fraudulent if you tax me on that. And I would recommend that everyone here, look at that in your own house. Check out your square footage and your actual acreage.
There is an appeal process, but the assessments come from the county.
From the county.
And so, I mean, we don't, we don't set those, that assessment. That's.
Okay, so is there a place in the city where I can send a letter that I'm going to send to the county where I could copy you guys? So that you understand what my problem is?
Absolutely. Yeah, you can send it to the city manager's office. Absolutely.
City manager's office?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, going through the county on that regard is, it's very important.
Well, so far, I'm going to have to go again. They told me I couldn't, but I'm going to.
Yes, absolutely.
The appeals process is closed now, but they'll be reopening it May 1st. If you want to make a note to recontact them then, May 1st.
A year from now? But, but wait, I went and visited with them before the appeal process was done. And they're ignoring all my data. Not all of it. They reduced this a little bit. But I am paying probably more per square footage than anyone in this, here, in this place for what they value my property at. Because it's 1,248 square feet less than what they say it is. And that's significant. I bought the house, assuming all the data was right.
Try again.
So I just wanted to mention that.
Try again.
Try again.
Try again or get an attorney or something.
Well, I am through a letter, and you guys will get a copy. The last thing is, I guess your increase, you're able to maintain the city budget at $1.54 because the evaluation of properties have gone up from last year? And so you're able to do it at $1.54, but you're still raising it to $1.92? Is that a true statement?
No. No.
So property values in Bristol, city of Bristol have not gone up from last year to now?
Yeah.
Have they?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The valuation, the assessed value of properties for tax purposes?
I think, I think from the assessment across the board, I think everybody in Sullivan County is dealing with that. That came through the county. That's why, I mean, and it has sent ripples actually all across the county.
No, but my question really has to do with your budget. It sounded like last year you had $1.98. This year you could lower it to $1.54 and survive.
That's the, that's the certified tax rate. That's the rate that is set by, by the state. Based on, based on property values and the assessment and all of that. That's where that number, that's where that number is coming from. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Right. Okay. All right.
My name is Jeff Purcell. I live at 300 Spruce Street, Bristol, Tennessee. About five years ago, I moved here from southeast Texas to get away from hurricanes and high taxes and high insurance rates. And so far, up to now, I've been pretty successful at that, and I love Bristol. When I got my appraisal notice from the county, my property went up 102% with the valuation. 102%. So when I started doing the numbers, the $1.54, I'm still paying, that's an increase in my taxes of 31%. If you went with the $1.54. So I'm still, and if you go with the $1.92, it's a tax increase of 64%. Now, one of the speakers before was talking about the 2.7% increase, something most, a lot of us in here got in social security benefits this year. Once they raised health insurance costs, that was gone. So now, people that are on a fixed income are faced with a, percentage-wise, a gigantic increase. So hopefully, you all can sharpen your pencils and come up with something that's a little bit less painful. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I'm Tina Cook. I came to United States in 1961, an American citizen. My son is a defense intel, serving Air Force. So therefore, I'm a citizen. Sometimes I believe I'm not. Anyway, today I'm speaking for seniors. You rescind the taxes on seniors, that's equity. That house is for us to retire, to pay for a nursing home, to pay for medical bills. If you raise the taxes on seniors, you got us in trouble. So I hope that you think about it. Another thing, when you get my age, 85, and you go from office to office, you get a runaround. Make it clear. Put it, whatever it is in your taxes, the services you have, where are the locations of the offices you have to go? Because when you become 85, you don't have the cognitive that all of you young people have. I struggled. I paid $9,000 for a unit, heat and air. No heat, no air. And it's been months since November. And I cannot resolve anything with the city, with anybody. Be careful who you give the permits. Be careful who you give the license. Because the predators there, they come and, especially women and older women. Okay? So you do serve us and look after us. Please do that and please help me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, we are ready to move on now to this next one. This public hearing is now closed. Now moving on to ordinance 25-14. It's an ordinance to amend the appropriation of funds and budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. The public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 25-14. Holly Baron will present this item.
So this is the public hearing for ordinance 25-14 to amend the appropriation of funds for the budget for fiscal year 2025. The drug fund is being proposed to amend $130,000. Dent service fund, $3,529,700. Stormwater fund, $856,087. General purpose school fund, $49,671,425. School capital projects fund, $8,177,459. Transfers are being proposed to amend to general fund from stormwater at $49,485. To capital facilities fund from general fund, $2,224,982. To capital projects fund, to school capital projects fund from the general purpose school fund at $8,66,359.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on ordinance 25-14 as to appropriation of fund, to amend the funds and budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025?
Good afternoon to Marandino again, 404 El Paso Drive. I just had a question about one line item that I saw interesting and from the budget, and I'm glad I came up here. Why do we keep moving money from the general fund to the stormwater fund and then back from the stormwater fund to the general fund? That's my only question.
Holly can answer that better.
There was a transfer from the general fund to stormwater fund just to help it out because the rates were not as, as high as they should have been. And then the stormwater fund is a proprietary type fund, and it can pay a pump payment in lieu of tax back to the general fund for the asset values that it holds in that fund.
Thank you for clarifying, but my question is, why, why not just keep the money in the same fund and use that money from the same fund? I don't see why we have to do the back and forth. Unless there's some sort of issue with there being a deficit at one point during the year, that would make sense. But I see $50,000 line item moved from the general fund to the stormwater fund, and now we're asking to move $49,000, nearly $50,000, back from the stormwater fund to the general fund. So that was, it confuses me why there's money moving around like that when it's the same fund going back and forth.
The general answer is, it's, it's an auditing, a tracking mechanism to track, transfer, or to, to track all of the transactions and ensure that they're all accounted for when we get our books audited every year. So that's the general answer. And again, Holly has the specifics as to what was transferred exactly and why, but.
This particular transaction is truing up the payment in lieu of amount, which is based on the assets in that fund in the prior fiscal year. So that's what, if that fund did pay taxes, it would pay that much in taxes back to the general fund. And so that, that amount doesn't go over of what we anticipated in the budget. That's why we're bumping this up a little bit to true it up. Basically a cleanup for the 25 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, this public hearing is now closed. All right, we're moved now to the appearance of citizens. Many of you filled out the sign-in sheet on your way in. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any item that is not on the agenda for formal consideration. A response will not likely be made at this time since in most cases neither council nor city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concerns. The city manager will look into the matter, report back to city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Again, comments are limited to three minutes and are not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent. There's a list here, and remember that you have a three-minute time limit on this. So the first person on this list is Barbara Fancher. All right, thank you. All right, next is Carol D. McCall, Ms. McCall. After Carol comes, it is Regina Odom, so you might want to be.
Denise McCall, 216 Bluff City Highway. I just wanted to read you guys something that I seen on Facebook today. It says, "When a single mom in Bristol incurs more expenses, she has to cut back on something in her budget." When a retired couple in Bristol incurs more expenses, they have to cut back on something in their budget. When a small business owner in Bristol incurs more expenses, they have to cut back on something in their budget. When the city incurs more expenses, they spend more money and raise their taxes to get it. There's a difference.
Regina Odom. Mr. Spicer.
This, what I'm about to say here is mainly for the audience, as, as well as the city council. I may be speaking my words here, but I'm actually speaking for my family, my friends, my neighbors, fellow citizens of Bristol, Tennessee, which we are all a part of. Sadly, what I think is going on here is a French term, 19th century French term called fait accompli, which is an accomplished fate. Meaning it doesn't matter what we say or do. They have the responsibility of voting the way the state tells them to vote through the Sullivan County. They do have the opportunity of being able to adjust that tax rate based upon what we're going to be assessed. They made it a zero-sum game for one reason. So when they double all your properties, you're not going to pay hardly any more taxes than what you're paying right now. But Bristol, Tennessee can adjust that level up or down, but they still have to go with the county says. So with that being the fact, I've been blessed in my career the last few years to be able to support and save enough money, I had enough focus to do that, to be able to weather times like this. My sister, my brother, some friends that I help along the way cannot. And I cover their expenses, and that's because I want to do. I'm not bragging on doing that sort of thing. But if they were not. But if they were not, if they were in the position to have, having to support themselves, they could not afford this. The population in Bristol is two, or not Bristol, Sullivan County is two hundred thousand. Does anyone on the board know what the delinquency rate is for not paying their taxes? I'm sorry?
We do know for Bristol.
What is Bristol?
Bristol's collection rate in the year is ninety-seven point four percent.
All right, well, it wasn't that several years ago, I believe. But the counting rate has actually doubled, not because of this assessment, but two years ago, it actually is up about thirty to forty percent from last year. This is before the assessment came out. By doubling our properties, the house that I grew up in, where my sister is, is now valued less than what sold behind the, behind the, the street behind where we, where she lives now. That house that sold behind hers was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's eight hundred square feet. Do I think my house is valued at that? Well, yeah, I've got that much in it for storing it, yes. But when I purchased the house, as you all did, your first homes, the rule was do not purchase a home more than three times your annual salary. So what would it take to afford an eight hundred square foot house for two hundred and forty thousand dollars? It would take an income of about eighty thousand dollars.
Mr. Spicer, you're, you're up against your time.
I understand, but no one else is here. If you just give me just a few more minutes.
We have a, we have a whole list right here.
Oh, I know that. There's a place to fight this, July seventeenth, at the county board, there's going to be another assessment. I'm going to try to speak to them as well. They may be able to make that adjustment. Otherwise, we need to have a sit-down with Governor Bill Lee and have him see what we do here. We do not have the industry to support eighty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you. Time is up. Thank you. Is it Henry Talbot? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, city council.
Yes, sir.
I was a business owner for forty years.
Would you mind stating your name and your address?
Henry Junior Talbot, fifty-six Tulip Grove, Bristol, Tennessee. I'm a property owner of probably of fourteen properties in Bristol, Tennessee area. I purchased these properties years ago to retire them, okay? I've owned these properties for thirty-some years, as most of you people in here that I'm sure that's being represented has come in here tonight. Most of these people in here probably have owned these properties for these many years, too. We've paid our taxes for these years at a reasonable amount of increase each time. Now, like I say, this thing looks like it's going to go probably the thirty percent, even could be up to fifty-two, whatever the percentage is. You know, I've worked hard all my life and made money in the business for forty years. But if the increase that I did of my business, that I increased it, of the increase of what it's going to be on these taxes, say an oil change that I went from thirty-nine ninety-five, if I increased that oil change for the, for the thing over the, you know, the period, if it did, if I, if I increased that oil change, say, forty percent, do you think I'd have any customers? The same, the same project is, is what's going on here. If we increase this, do you think a lot of these people in here can afford this? There's no way. So I think over, you know, we need to back up and look at other things that needs to be done and not pile it all in one time on the tax increase. You know, I purchased these properties thirty-some years ago and yeah, I've increased it over what you guys done over the years, but this year has just been astronomically way too much. And I don't think it's right that, you know, that all the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee have to pay these taxes of what it's you guys who want the increase. It's not right. And I think, you know, everybody in this audience applaud to that. You know, I think we need to step back and look and see if there's not something else that we can do besides piling all the taxes on all at one time. Yeah, like the fellow said earlier, let's back up and, you know, do a little this year and then next year. Hopefully, that everything will assess itself out, but I don't know. It's probably another fifty percent increase next year. So where do we go? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Marandino. Timothy. Thank you, sir. Kim Kirk.
Hey, Kim Kirk, reside at two zero eight Creekside Court. As principal, a proud Tennessee High graduate and a Bristol native born and raised, with roots deep in, in this city my entire life, I stand before you with fire in my heart to address a personal attack on my reputation and to proclaim my yielding passion for Tennessee High, vowing to fight for its legacy as Bristol's heart. Lee Powers claimed I attacked her after the last city council meeting. I did not. I know what being attacked feels like. I approached her calmly to discuss her quoting my social media posts in two public meetings. These accusations damage my reputation.
This, this is not the place for that sort of dialogue. We can set up another way for you to do that, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that.
I didn't realize I had rules with what I could say, but I'll, I'll skip to my next part. Tennessee High, Bristol's only high school, is the forge where young Vikings are shaped. My love for this institution runs deep and I will fight to preserve its legacy for past, present, and future Vikings. Each year, I deliver our We Are Tennessee High graduation speech, igniting pride in our traditions. Friday nights, come alive with, alive with Viking pride, families and alumni, alumni pack the stone castle, cheerleaders and dancers rally, J R O T C presents colors, madrigals sing, and the bands' drums and fans roar as light up the night. Our coaches, teachers, and staff, as surrogate parents, raise Vikings, fierce Vikings with knowledge and grit. Our shield stands for honor, our axis for strength. Class night, spirit weeks, homecoming parades, and our alma mater bond us with loyalty, fueling our unraveled pride. From the stone castle, historic fortress since nineteen thirty-six, to Viking Hall and Todd Houston film, field named for a legend instrumental in baseball, who also served as mayor. Our venues are icons. The stone castle's architecture and our school's colonial revival columns scream permanence, yet their age demands protection. The city met and removed us from discussion with Boyd's force to redevelop Todd Houston Field. Unacceptable. I'm excited the city has pledged to work with Tennessee High and prioritize our students, even as Mark stated, we'd need to ask to use our own field. Without school input, city construction plans could disrupt our baseball season, denying our seniors their home field. This deal leaves wrestling without a permanent home for now unless we choose to purchase Rommel Rose Building with an asking price that exceeds a million over what it was sold for five years ago. These spaces are our Viking identity, where students shine. Changes must honor our legacy and prioritize our kids. Your twenty twenty-four strategic plan omeens students, why raise property taxes if not for our children, our greatest resource? Our alumni, many in this room, carry our legacy. Tennessee High is a nucleus of Bristol and my passion drives me to fight for its traditions, students, and place in this community. I've had your children, walked the Tennessee Hys with Mark and Vince, and stand as a Viking pleading to protect our properties and heritage. I will fight for Tennessee High with every breath and I ask you to join me in raising the maroon and white high to show what Bristol truly stands for. Thank you.
Greg, Greg Cochran.
Yes, my name is Greg Cochran and I live at two thirty-seven Shirley Drive, and I've lived there for fifty years. And we have been told by the council and by the city manager that Todd Houston Field needs to be enlarged to accommodate professional baseball team. Well, the problem with that is, after looking at the architect's drawing, that field not be big enough. A minimum professional baseball field is a four hundred feet dead center field. Sidelines, three hundred and twenty feet. You can't do that with that field unless you move the school. You're talking about five to seven million dollars a minimum. There's, there's money you can save. All the other fields in the Appalachian League, if that's what it's still called, have fields exceeding four hundred feet center field and three hundred and twenty feet down each sideline. What happens if we do this and they say you've got to increase the field to make it a professional team? What are we going to do then? Are we going to go back and punt and make it other field? We had fields down on three ninety-four, that didn't happen. We need to rethink that. It's not going to work. You're going to spend five to seven million dollars a minimum from, I think, five million from the city and two million from the school, plus whatever else money that you've got there. That's a savings that we could do with this tax incentive for the, for the property taxes. You can't do it. I mean, you've got Edgemont Avenue, you've got Shirley Drive there. Ms. Turner lives on, on Edgemont Avenue. I live on Shirley Drive. You've got two small streets. You've got parking there now that when it comes to a school board meeting, or not school board, but a PTA meeting at Haynesfield, you've got people parked on Edgemont going down back behind the baseball field. You got them going down Shirley Drive, parking there. You can't get around. You've got the fire department within a hundred feet of where the baseball field is with this new enlarged facility. What are they going to do when it comes to a fire? What are they going to do with, with the traffic? It's going to be a disaster. And how long is it going to take the city to recoup the money that they spend on this baseball team that's going to play twenty-four games in Bristol? They're going to play Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday nights, five o'clock on Sunday nights, seven thirty on Friday nights. You've got all the noise there. It's going to be a damn disaster. And I'm sorry to say that, but that's, that's, that's just the way it is, folks.
Andrew Taylor.
I do have a quick question while Andrew's coming to the podium. Have we received the drawings, the official architectural drawings yet? We have not. So I guess my sixty-four thousand dollar question has been, or my, my concern has been, the baseball field as it is right now is not regulation, regulation size at all, and we know that. And as far as it being a high school facility, we know that the other fields are a more reg, a more regulated size. And I, I don't know why everyone thinks that it's just about the state liners, because we have said repeatedly that the main reason that we have even entertained this whole venture is to give our students, our youth, an opportunity to play on a much better field. Right now, it has sharp edged brico blocks for seats. It's, it's antiquated, it's rundown. You go into the dressing rooms, they're, at some point, and I understand we're having the discussion about the tax rate, but at some point, are we not ever going to improve our facilities? We, we have waited and waited and waited. This has been a four-year opportunity in the making where there's two million dollars being invested in this as a private-public partnership and twenty-five thousand dollars a month for the use two months out of the year, as well as other amenities that will be brought into it. So while I, I understand what Mr. Cochran is saying, I also have been privy, and I know Kurt, you have, and Mike Maines has too, as to how an exceptional field could in fact be put on that site with an abundance of parking. So I just, you know, I don't want us to get ahead of ourselves in that unless, did the school system, have y'all received the architectural renderings? Have you already received those, Kurt? Okay.
Wait, let's move on.
All right, I just wanted to share those comments. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, sorry about that. Thank you.
That's fine. I'm going to kind of, it kind of led me into what I was going to talk about facilities. So they worked out well. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I need to be direct. What's happening between the city and the school system is unacceptable. We're watching opportunities for students get stalled, redirected, or outright dismissed because adults in charge can't or won't work together. This isn't a communication issue anymore. It's a leadership failure and our students, families, and taxpayers are all the ones paying the price. That should concern everyone in here. Let's talk about the wrestling facility. For years, our wrestlers have trained in subpar conditions. Finally, the school system secured funding to give those athletes the facility they deserve. Now, instead of standing beside the school and help that vision become a reality, city is pushing to sink those funds into a building. It was purchased for one point four million despite being appraised for only three hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's not responsible and it's certainly not collaboration. And then there's the baseball facility, another opportunity for partnership that instead has turned into confusion and exclusion. The school system, which represents the very students that will use that field, have been cut out of the process. Again, is not how a healthy relationship works. These decisions might seem like isolated issues, but they're not. Together, it sends a loud and clear message to families that the city and the school system are not aligned, that the students are not the priority, and that if you want better opportunities for your child, you may have to go elsewhere. And guess what? Families are doing that. I've been approached more than once about pulling my student athlete from this district, and I do not want to do that. I believe in this community, but I will do what's best for my child. When my fam, when families walk away, they don't just take students. They take the energy and the momentum and tax dollars. They take their support and investment to communities that do work together and do prioritize their youth and that do build long-term solutions through real collaboration. That's money living our city. That's revenue walking out the door. And that's lost, a future lost, not just for our school system, but for the city itself. This shouldn't be a battle between two sides. The city and school system are not competitors. They are partners, or at least they should be. Because at the end of the day, we share the same taxpayers, we serve the same families and represent, or are responsible for building the same future. It's time to sit down at the same table, not with agendas, but with shared goals. It's time to stop asking schools to pay for city missteps and start investing together in solutions that benefit everyone. If we don't, we'll keep losing students, we'll keep losing families, and we'll keep losing the very heart of this community. Thank you.
Donna Trigiani.
I touched a little bit on the, did I say my name and address again?
Yes, please.
Donna Trigiani, Channel Eight, Chur Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. I touched a little bit on what the other communities are paying. I would like to go in a little bit deeper on this. With the combined Sullivan County tax rate and the Bristol proposed tax rate, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm deriving four point three two as the total tax rate. The total tax rate for Nashville City is three point two five. The total tax rate for Knoxville is four point zero zero nine six. Johnson City is two point seven five, or six, sorry. Kingsport is four point oh seven. We are the lowest paid community in, you know, any jobs we have. They're much lower than Johnson City, much lower than Kingsport, Nashville, Knoxville. Yet, we are going to have the highest property tax rates. This is going to ruin family dynamics. Our children are going to leave for lower, lower property rate communities. It's going to break up our families. We can no longer depend on each other for, you know, any type of elderly care, childcare. It's definitely going to ruin the families. I used to think that this was a good place to live. I'm not so sure anymore. I'm not so sure anymore. If you vote these rates in, then I will myself think that whoever voted are the ones who ruined the good place to live. This was our community, but I don't want it to be my community if this is going to be what's happening in the future. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Campbell. Sally Long. Diane Hype.
Diane Hype, 516 Carolina Avenue. I've lived in Bristol long enough to remember when this city used to work for its people, not against them. Let's talk facts. Last year, our tax rate went up 13%. This year, property values were reassessed, up an average 46%. Now, you're proposing another 25%. And for what? Did we really need a brand-new visitor center? I understand now tonight that our tax dollars don't go to that, but isn't that what our Chamber of Commerce is for, that building? Did we need to relocate the Bristol state liners from Virginia to Tennessee because our old mayor owned it? You know, what happened to the White Top fields? Why are we buying up old downtown buildings for the city? We're going to have to spend more money to renovate them. Unfortunately, it feels like we're being asked to contribute more without receiving anything in return. No better schools, no improved roads, no enhanced public services, no tangible benefits that justify the added financial strain. But let me ask you this. What are we not spending the money on? A city pool, a place where our kids and family can gather. Because let's be honest, adults don't sit around the splash pad out at Steels Creek. Meanwhile, the basic services, things that we used to work, that used to work, are falling apart. Our trash service is sporadic at best. I drive our streets every day. I see toilets, yard waste, old appliances, and they sit there for weeks. I've called on myself for Anderson, Broad, Carolina, Taylor, because the claw doesn't come down these roads anymore, for some reason. And if they do, they don't pick up the trash. And while I'm at it on Carolina, I don't know who approved the curb changes, but they took two feet of road off of Carolina Avenue. You might as well make it a one-way street. I don't know if you've driven it, but when you leave tonight, go down that road. Feels like the city is being run like a business that forgot who its customers are. We're not just a tax base, we're your neighbors, your voters, your community. And right now, many of us feel ignored, overcharged, and fed up. If you're going to raise taxes this aggressively, then we deserve to see aggressive improvements in services, infrastructure, and quality of life. Right now, all we see is vanity projects and neglected essentials. It's not just disappointing, it's disgraceful. I urge you, reevaluate this increase, show us leadership, fix what's broken before adding anything new, listen to the people that live here, because we remember what Bristol used to be, and it isn't that anymore. Thank you.
Nick Rutledge.
Thank you all again. Nick Rutledge, 102 Galway Road. I addressed some of this earlier, but one of the points that got brought up tonight is the issue of the baseball stadium. It's my understanding that 5 million of that would come from the city, and then 2 million would come from partnership, private partnership. It's obvious that, at least obvious to me, that the economics of that agreement are not working right now based on the financial situation. So what I'm asking on that is to renegotiate. I'm not necessarily saying cancel the project outright, but possibly change scope. If there's aspects of it that improve accessibility for like ADA accommodations, or improving facilities for locker rooms, or bleachers, whatever the case may be, or lighting, or safety improvements, that's fine. But if it's to serve an Appalachian League team, and they want Cadillac-grade niceties that might be featured at a minor league team, that's not necessary. I know for Chattanooga and Knoxville in particular, they were basically forced to build new baseball stadiums for their minor league affiliate teams because Major League Baseball told them, "You will build us a stadium, or we're leaving." Bristol is not in that situation. We're not Chattanooga, we're not Knoxville, we're Bristol. So the other properties in question, the L.C. King Building, purchased recently for the sum of 2.75 million. There's no clear project identified with that building, but prior to purchase, there's hopes and aspirations for that building, but hope is not a plan. My line of work, you have to have a clearly identified project before you launch something. So it looks like the cart got put before the horse to me on that one. The Shelby Street Lot, unknown dollar amount value for that one, but again, no immediate project identified. So for some of these properties that were maybe preemptively purchased, asking to reevaluate those purchases, perhaps sell them, if there's not a clearly identified project, again, I want the police officers to get their raise, I want the fire department to get their raise, I want them to have the best possible equipment, partner with our neighbors in Johnson City and Kingsport, do a big request for proposal, and take advantage of economy of scale. If we need more police cars, you know, we, I understand that each department outfits their cars differently, but it's still a Ford Police Interceptor, it's still a Dodge Durango Pursuit. Take advantage of those economies of scales. And again, just, I'm not saying anything for or against the increase, but perhaps settle on the median of about that $1.76, and let's come back in 12 months and renegotiate. That's all. Because I understand revenue needs need to go up, and I don't agree with the proposed $1.92 or $1.98, and maybe $1.54 won't cover everything. So let's settle in the middle and settle for a median as a compromise. Thank you.
Bill Fletcher. Bill Fletcher. All right. The next name is Karen, is it Bonterra? Am I not right? I'm having trouble reading the name. Is there a Karen that wanted to speak tonight? Rebecca Adams.
Good evening. Rebecca Adams, 105 Eaton Lane. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and also thank you for your service, because I know it is a super hard job. And I appreciate the people who have talked to me and provided me information. As I stated to several of you, and first and foremost, I know that some of us will have to agree to disagree on certain things. But as we've talked, our taxes increased 13%. With the reassessment and this increase that we proposed, we're now looking for many of us over another 55% to 57%. So over this past year, then, we've got almost 70% increase in our taxes for property taxes. And that doesn't even include the increases that we're going to have for water and sewer, and then the concern that with those, we're going to have increased taxes and charges for those as we go forward, because there's been discussion that those funds aren't covering their expenses as they are right now. So I'm concerned that we're trying to be everything to everybody, and as a city of our size, we simply can't do that. I'm concerned that we've purchased property that has sat there for three years, and we haven't done anything with it, that we might not have had a true plan for everything that we want to do. In addition, we've apparently purchased another property with the King Building, and having been in some discussions previously at work sessions, when you had your bond person here, and we talked about the debt you had and the debt you were going to incur, what was going to happen to our tax rate, which concerns me, because even though my husband and I can afford that, there were many years ago, when I returned to school with two children, that this would have devastated our financial position. And I know many single parents, and I know lots of seniors are concerned about this and simply can't afford it. Again, I think we need to come back and really focus and get an understanding of what our citizens are willing to pay for, because we've got things now, and we've got an increase with our community engagement and events. And I know lots of people who go downtown and who love going downtown, but we've got an increase of almost $476,000 for community events. We simply can't do all those things along with support our police and fire and have those increases. We also have, and I've been on the Library Foundation Board and support the library, but we've got an Evoque library that's 3.9 miles from the other library and about 11 minutes from there. We have to go back and look at all the things that we have and determine truly what we value. It's concerning that when we talk about that, then there may have even been comments that we do not have to have a city-school system. So please, in the past, you had people, and you went through to the schools, and you talked about your budgets, and you got input. I think we need communication between our community and our city council. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, I'm having a little trouble reading their name. Is it Ganarez? Is that right? Okay.
Hi. I'm Leila Ganarez, 109 Brittany Circle, Love City. So, correct me if I'm wrong. The budget for next year is a 267% increase over this year? Is that right? Okay. Correct me, please. What is it? What's the, what is the increase in budget for next year?
4.7?
Okay.
4. something.
I don't know where I got a 267% increase. That's good. So, just to put it in perspective, my next-door neighbor bought the house next to me about 15 months ago. They moved here from California. Their appraisal that they got this, a few, couple months ago, is actually $200,000 more than what they paid about 15 months ago. Does that make sense to anybody? I mean, that's... They're looking at moving back to California, because it's going, it's cheaper. That's pretty bad. So, is there a plan in place for people that won't be able to afford the tax increase on their property? I mean, you have, like, the electric company that has a type of indigent fund available for seniors and whatnot that can't afford their electric bills. What plan do you have for seniors on fixed incomes that just don't have a way to produce the extra money that is going to be required to pay these increased property taxes?
Do you want to answer that?
We have a tax relief program for seniors and veterans.
You do have a tax release program? Relief?
For seniors and veterans.
For seniors and veterans.
Excellent. Okay. That probably should be publicized so that they know that, so that seniors and veterans do know that. I'm sure you know that if you follow through with increased taxes, I don't feel like any of you have worked to get yourself in your positions to ruin the lives of the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee. I feel like you actually came into these positions to make our city a better place. But politics can get messy. And just know, I know you're counting on people to have short memories, but I feel like, in this case, when you're going to hurt people really, really, where it hurts badly, I don't think that they will have short memories when it comes to reelection time.
Thank you. All right. Now, the Parents of Citizens is now closed. We have two ordinances for second reading tonight. We have Ordinance 25-13. It's an ordinance to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. This item was presented by Holly Varen during the public hearing earlier this evening. And the public had an opportunity to comment during that public hearing. Are there any questions for Ms. Varen on this matter from counsel?
I have a few questions. Holly, in this budget for this year, are there any additional, is there any additional expense for pay increases? In this budget that were not in FY '25's budget?
FY '26 pay increases.
Yes, in FY '26, do we have any new payroll items, amounts, that were not in FY '25? Our fire and police, based on the study in all the other departments, are they new to FY '26 budget, this budget that we're talking about?
Are you talking dollars or people, number of people?
I'm talking about dollars.
Dollars, okay. So the fiscal year '26 budget includes a 4.7% pay increase for all city departments. It also includes what happened with fire and police in fiscal year '25. That carries forward into '26.
And how much is that?
I can tell you the approximate, the overall department analyses for police and fire combined was approximately 1.5 million.
The 1.5 million of new payroll. And then, what about Public Works and the other departments? How much is that projected new expense?
We don't know. So we are almost complete with Public Works, and then we will move on to the other departments. We're hoping to do truncated analyses with those smaller departments. We included a 4.7% market adjustment for all of the departments that did not go through the department analysis yet. And then, in the city manager budget, there's an additional $700,000 to incorporate for those implementation of the other department analyses.
So we're looking at an increase of, is it about 2.2 overall with that $70,000 and the 1.5 for fire and police?
It will be more than that when you factor in the market adjustments, because you have to factor the market adjustments with the new department analysis. Those will get factored in with our compensation consultant.
And so, in our previous budget discussions, we had 1.5 for fire and police, and I believe it was projected all total for all other departments would be about 1.5.
Yes.
Yes. So a total of 1 point, a total of about 3 million for the payroll increases.
Correct.
And we did the analysis, because how long had it been since we had appropriately, with the cost of living, made payroll adjustments to the degree that we will now?
To my, I don't know when the last period was.
Holly, do you have any recollection of when we made the appropriate salary adjustments?
I believe it was in fiscal year '23, possibly '24, when they were, they were doing a compensation study. We tried to increase a certain percentage each year, a certain group, and I thought it was '23 or '24. I would have to go back.
No. It was earlier than that.
It started before.
It started before then.
Yep.
I mean, it started before that, but it went several years to get it up to...
It was a five-year plan and we dropped a year or two where we didn't...
So there was a compensation study done and Mary Lee can correct me because she was here when, when it was done. It was prior to my coming on. There was a compensation study done that was never, it was not fully implemented. So we never caught our, our employees up to where the compensation study said that they should be.
That's correct. We did a compensation study in around 2016 or 2017 and tried to implement it and was not able to implement it fully. And it took us five years to implement that program.
And the reason that I bring that up is because we, we have found that we have lost a lot of employees that we have trained and they have gone to Arkansas County, they've gone to Bristol, Virginia. They've, some have gone to the casino. They've gone to other areas because our pay scale was not comparable and this has gone on for several years. And so not only were we losing employees and having to try to recruit and retain employees, but we were also having to train the employees. And some of that reason, it was because we, and Tara, you remember this because that's back in your day. We insisted on staying, or we had three votes that insisted on staying at the state certified tax rate. And now, just, and, and Holly, you're Terry, one can correct me or Ms. Bujawal. When you're at the state certified tax rate, it doesn't take into account any pay increases. It doesn't take into account any inflation. It doesn't take into account any antiquated capital, equipment. It, it, it takes a snapshot of where you have been at that particular point and that's where you are. And so, over the years, when we stayed at the state certified tax rate year after year after year, we had to push out and because we had meetings just like this, where the public came, and, and I hear you, I mean, I hear you. But we had meetings just like this and we stayed at the certified tax rate for years until the year before last. And we had gotten to such a point that we could not continue on at the state certified tax rate, which was why we went from the 198 to the 225. We, we were really at that point left with no choice. And so, in real dollars, to go from the state certified tax rate of about 154, 153 something, 154. And that has not been totally affirmed yet because we still have reappraisals that are being appealed. So we're still waiting for that to be absolute, correct?
We've been, we've had confirmation from the state that they don't believe the rate will change significantly. So they are confident with the current rate.
So, so at, at the 154 or 153, almost 154. So this year, Holly, and if, and if y'all just indulge me a minute, this year, Holly, we're talking about in real dollars at 192, what is the amount in real dollars that we would benefit above the state certified tax rate?
It's about four and a half million.
Four and a half million. So you've already heard, and that's at 192?
192.
Above the 154. And so, we've already explained that of that 4.5 million, about 3 million is, a minimum of about 3 million, million is going to go to payroll. And we have some capital needs. We have tried to, any other of the projects that have been talked about are where we are reallocating monies, not using new monies. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
And a lot of their development is based on the acquisition of grants that we have applied for and feel very good about. I'm looking back at Tom Anderson to... So, where do we go? Where do we go? What, what other than the capital improvements and the payroll? And I'll tell you this, we've had opportunity in the past for public-private partnerships that have been thwarted. We had one opportunity of 25 million to build a TCAT facility in partnership part two that would have gone to the training of not only our school system students, but it was also to train our workforce development adults. And it was thwarted. And the 25 million was, was, it walked away. We had another opportunity of 22 million to improve facilities. Everyone couldn't get on the same page with that. It walked away. We have others in the community, outside of the community, that are looking to make substantial investments. And they're watching what we're doing with the baseball. And if, if we don't, if we don't follow through with the baseball and...
Ms. Powers?
Let me just finish. I just, I wind it up right here. To follow through with the baseball, I know Andrew, a former student of mine, great presentation. But it is first and foremost for the students. You've heard that over and over again. And, and it's just, it has, it has been not well represented by some in the community. But it is for the students first and foremost. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for indulging me.
Are there any other questions from Ms. Verran? From council? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We, we had opportunity earlier for, for, for community to speak, so... Is there a motion to approve ordinance 25-13?
I would like, Mayor...
No, you may not. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 25-13?
I would make a motion for ordinance 25-13. It's based on a tax rate of 192.
I need a second before we can move to discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. Now we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So...
Only by the city council?
So, I know we have worked really, really hard on this and we started at a much higher rate trying to fit everything in. And then we have gone through several different rates. Also, it is very interesting when we model things out because that is what we want to do, is look at what the rate does further out. We also look and Mr. Marandino at our reserve fund and how often we use it. At one point, our reserve fund was pretty high and we didn't need to keep it that high. So we were able to pull from it. Now we have to be a whole lot more careful. So we're, where it is at this point. Anyway, but I know we've talked about different things and I know that our staff has worked extraordinarily hard combing through the budget. And thank you for some of your ideas, some of those things we already do with doing the state funds to get the better prices and doing some things that have been brought to the table even recently to try to get the best, best that we can get. Anyway, I know the most recent that, that our city manager has, I think, talked to some of us, each of us about, was to try to see if we couldn't get that down. And it's not where we'd like to have it and it's not where, where, who did the, it's not your compromise quite. But anyway, to talk about the possibility of, I think, 189, to keep it at 189 and it prevents us at this point from having to cut staff and cut into more of our services. It's not where people here obviously want it. It's not where we want it, but it keeps us where we can provide services and keep moving Bristol forward. So, I would, that's my discussion. I could make an amendment if you, if somebody would like me to.
I mean, if you're welcome to, if you're welcome to make an amendment.
Maybe other people want to discuss before I make that amendment.
Is there any other discussion on this matter?
Okay. I'll make that, I'll make an amendment that we amend this resolu, this ordinance to be at 189.
Okay, there's a motion here to amend the ordinance 25-13 as a whole, including the budgeted revenues and budget expenditure so that revenues and expenses are based on tax rate of $1.89. Is there a second? Is there a second on this motion?
Okay.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on a tax rate of $1.89?
On the amendment?
On the amend, amendment, yes. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. We are, we are now voting on the amended tax rate of $1.89 for the ordinance 25-13. Is that correct? Everybody understand? Okay. All right, Mary Lee, can you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
No.
Powers?
No.
Aker?
Yes.
Turner?
No.
All right. That ordinance does not pass.
That amendment.
That amendment does not pass. So now we're back to the original ordinance, which has it at $1.98. So let me maybe restate that.
$1.92.
Sorry, $1.92. Beg your pardon. So now it's an ordinance to adopt the annual budget and the tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, ending July 30, 2026, where the tax rate would be at $1.92. We, we already have a motion and a second. So now, any further discussion on ordinance 25-13 from council? Seeing none, Mary Lee, can you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Fire Robin?
No.
Hutton?
No.
Powers? Aker?
No.
Turner?
No.
Okay. Ordinance 25-13 fails.
Okay.
So we're going to move now to ordinance 25-14, which is an ordinance to amend the appropriations of funds and budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. This item was also presented by Ms. Verran during the public hearing earlier this evening. The public had an opportunity to comment during that public hearing. Are there any questions for Ms. Verran on this matter? From council?
I'll move to approve ordinance 25-14. Maybe I'll be more successful.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mary Lee, can you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Aker?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
We have one resolution for consideration tonight. Resolution 25-69. It's a resolution authorizing entry into a letter of agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia for fiscal year 2026. Federal Highway Administration Metropolitan Planning Funds for the Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization. Community Development Director Chairth Young will present.
Thank you, Mayor Hutton. Good evening, council members. Tonight, I'm here just to request your authorization to enter into a annual contract that we signed with the Virginia Department of Transportation. As the fiscal agent for the Bristol MPO, the city does receive this funding annually. It's federal highways administration monies and state of Virginia monies. Virginia provides this money because it supports regional planning activities that are identified in the Unified Work Program of the MPO. We do typically bring this to you in either June or July for authorization to enter into the contract. But Virginia BDOT has requested that we submit this paperwork by the end of the month, so June 30. And so that's the reason for making the request tonight. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Young from council? Hearing none. There's a motion to approve Resolution 25-69?
Motion to approve 25-69.
All right, a second? We got it? We have a motion and a second. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Aker?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
All right. We move now to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just one update. The county Public Health Clinic building will be going to the Sullivan County Commission next Thursday, the 26th, at 6:00 p.m. Hopefully that, thank you to Commissioner Harvey. I know she's in the audience tonight. She's been doing a lot of work on this and hopefully that has a positive outcome at that meeting. The building owner did decrease the price by 50,000 to account for some improvements to the HVAC system that need to occur. We have discussed city maintaining the upper portion of the parking lot where the city clinic is. And then the, the county would maintain the lower portion. That's to repave or do anything like that. The city will provide general maintenance for the exterior of the property as we currently do. And then any significant building improvements that would impact both units would, would be split 70/30. Any internal improvements to either of the units would be taken on by the, the entity. And looking at that four-year funding agreement as has been discussed. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on that and, and let you know I will be attending that meeting if anyone else would like to. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing that very much. There's a moment now for city council comments. Is there any comments from city council members? Margaret?
Of course. Which, I mean, this is pretty odd. So we'll get some instructions on what happens since we don't have a budget at this time. So, so I wanted just to thank everybody for attending and to thank you for your comments. I know for some people that's not easy to do, to stand up and speak at a microphone in this setting. So really appreciate that. It is, it's been an opportunity for some education and for a better understanding of some of our process. A lot of our processes are our city work sessions. So those are, all city meetings are open to the public. That's part of how it works. So we welcome you to attend and learn more. A lot of y'all did a lot of homework. So I really appreciate the homework that y'all did getting ready. And we need to do a better job of getting the information out. It is, communication is really hard. Our newspaper isn't what it used to be. Not everybody, as was pointed out, is on social media. Communication is a real challenge. It's always been difficult. Issues are complicated. So we try to do, we obviously need to do some different things. And we want to improve communication and dialogue with our citizens. I wanted just to say a couple of things. Sorry, Mayor, I'm taking a long time. From a few of the comments, just to say a couple of things. Malin Luttrell, who served as mayor, never owned, never made any money from the state liners. He's a volunteer. He's done that. And just needs for people to appreciate that he does not make money by anything that the state liners do. Older buildings, we've seen it's important to preserve our older buildings and sometimes the cities across our country step in to help with that. I know in our community, people grieve about Bunting's drugstore. At that time, our city had not ever stepped in. We have done that some. McAdoo's and 620 State are examples of buildings that the city originally purchased and then worked for businesses to come in. Also, we have a recognition program for historic homes and also this year, Stone Castle was part of that as well. So for our services, I know I've always heard people were proud of our snow removal. There's quite a bit of paving going on right now. Our trash, our garbage pickup has been great. We have... We have had some issues with our trash pickup. We tried to save some dollars. We're trying to adjust that and trying to figure out how we can make it work better. So we do want to hear from you. It's important when you do see things in your neighborhood that you call and let us know. We're working on it with good intent to serve. Swimming pool, the Haysfield Pool got ahead of us or behind us or whatever, and we're not on the timeline we should have been. There's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, a lot of things that happen. There's, information can't be shared until there's a plan for a project, et cetera, some of those things. That's how city economic development works. And I want to thank Andrew Taylor especially. I think you, I totally agree. City council and schools are not aligned. It's not healthy. It's not a healthy community. It's not what our citizens want. I do think communication is a basic key, and then there's more to it than that. But I'm hoping that we can face that and recognize it and take some actions to, to work on it. So thank you very much, and thank you for the time.
Absolutely. Any other comments?
I do not.
Ray, do you have any comments?
I, I want to, I do want to say, I really, I mean this earnestly. Thank you all for being here. It has not been pleasant, but it's been good. We live in a country where our people have an opportunity to come and speak and, and be heard. And so thank you, earnestly, thank you for being here and for participating in your city government. Hopefully, going forward, you'll take more opportunities to do that, show up at our work sessions, show up at these meetings. You have an opportunity to speak, reach out to us, and that sort of thing. We do value that. It's very important. We have an incredible community. Bristol is an amazing community, an amazing town. We have some great things happening. And we do have a great city and a great city staff, and we have great people who live here. Sometimes those things get, get at cross purposes, and how we navigate it is incredibly important. And so being here, saying what you need to say is good. So even if it's hard for some of us to hear it. So thank you. We appreciate that very much. We have more work to do. You've communicated that, we have more work to do. The, the, the tax assessment that came out, that, that is not something that the city has any control over. That comes straight from the county. And it hit like a bomb all across Sullivan County. Kingsport has dealt with it. We're dealing with it. It, it just, all of a sudden, it was a bomb. And we're trying to make those sorts of adjustments. And our city staff and this council has been working and working, working, trying to figure out, how do we maintain the city services that we need? How do we continue to move forward as a city while at the same time not taxing our people to death? We, we don't want to do that. No one up here wants to be in the situation that we're in. We're trying to figure out the best. Going forward, personally, I can't promise that there won't be a tax increase. I just, I can't. I wish I could, but I can't. We've got, we've got some work to do, and we'll do the harder work that we need to do, and we'll come back and do the same thing, hopefully, very soon. So again, I really want to say thank you to all of you for being here. It really is an important thing, so thank you. And this meeting is now adjourned.